Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission. Board of Directors, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
It's first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item, now is the opportunity.
Good morning. We'll try this again. That was a little early, so we'll try this again. Julian Torano, Julian Torano, Opportunity Village. On behalf of the over 2,000 individuals that we serve monthly, as well as our CEO, Bob Brown, we want to say thank you for the recommendation to fund the Community Mobility Program. People with disabilities and special needs have unique needs in order to be out in the community, in order to socialize, in order for them to obtain employment. The Community Mobility Program is going to allow us to diversify our services using Uber, Lyft, and Tango to be able to provide services outside of the service area, to be able to get someone a first job where they might not have an opportunity, and more importantly, to get some of the most severely disabled individuals out in the community, integrated with the rest of Las Vegas. So, on behalf of Opportunity Village, thank you for the recommendation to fund a mobility program. We're extremely excited and really looking forward to extending our partnership and improving paratransit within Southern Nevada and nationally as we show success with pilot programs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jane Camber?
Hello, I'm with Helping Hands of Henderson. We provide transportation to seniors in Henderson to get to their medical care, for nutritional items, and also for the personal and social events. And without the funding that we've received in the past from this commission, we wouldn't be able to provide these services to our seniors. So, we really appreciate you, the recommendation that we continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Pelletier?
I'm Carolyn Pelletier, the Transportation Manager for Helping Hands of Vegas Valley. And I'm here on behalf of the Executive Director, Marcia Blake. We'd like to thank the board for funding us. We also provide services to seniors, people 60 and over. We have a transportation program, which without the funding, we would not be able to continue with that as efficiently as we can. We also have a pantry program and a small home repair program for seniors that still live in their home, and a respite care voucher program. All of those work together. And without the funding, like I said, we would not be able to continue to support the seniors. We take seniors from the North Las Vegas Valley and the Las Vegas Valley to their medical appointments, grocery shopping, and other needs and services that they need. So, thank you very much on behalf of that. And Mrs. Goodman, I'd like to say thank you for spelling your name, first name correctly.
Thank you. Amanda Shipp?
Good morning. My name is Amanda Shipp, and I'm representing Easther Seals, Nevada. First of all, I would like to thank the board, Tina, MJ, Dan, Antoinette, and Karen. Because of you, together, we provided over 5,000 trips, or I'm sorry, 5,000 rides for people with disabilities to work. And today, I'm asking that you approve the Community Mobility Project so we can continue this amazing, successful partnership for the people we serve in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Pofowski.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Pofowski from Jewish Family Service Agency. And I also want to thank you for the recommendation for ongoing funding for the services that we provide. I also want to thank the RTC staff, who's really amazing to work with and help us to be creative, to meet the needs of seniors in our community. Because there's no one-size-fits-all transportation for seniors. We have some seniors that use a bus for shopping, some that are paratransit, some that are using taxi, and some that are using the Uber, Lyft system for things such as chemotherapy and dialysis. So, we appreciate the flexibility that this program allows to meet the needs of our seniors.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. And for those that did come down to thank the RTC for the partnerships, on behalf of the board, we thank you also. Your partnership has enabled us to reach so many more people in such an efficient manner. So, these are the partnerships that truly make things work. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next item is to approve your agenda. Your agenda is in order and ready for approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item number three is to receive the CEO report. And we'd like to start by recognizing a dear friend of the RTC who passed away a few weeks ago. Patrick Smith was a trusted advisor to our agency and other organizations. He provided strategic counsel and thought leadership to both private and public sector organizations that helped build Southern Nevada's transportation infrastructure. He was a beloved figure in our community, and he will dearly be missed. And for those of you who know him, he was, it was just a delight. He was worked hard, dedicated to Southern Nevada, and took his job serious, his issues serious, but he could also be very fun and playful. So, truly will be missed. We have a few recognitions. The next item in today's CEO report is an operator recognition from our contractor, MV Transportation, Linda Johnson Sanders. We have Linda Johnson Sanders with us. Come on down, Linda. Linda showed extreme compassion by helping rescue a missing and endangered man she encountered at a bus stop. Ms. Johnson Sanders found him sitting on a bench, recognized him from news reports earlier in the day, and called dispatch. She brought him aboard the bus, bought him breakfast when she realized he hadn't eaten, and waited until authorities arrived. Linda Johnson Sanders, thank you so much for going above and beyond.
Thank you all. I've been doing this 24 years. I love it. I love the people. I want to thank my team, MV Transportation, boo-boo. It's just, I enjoy what I do, you know? I encourage all the operators to take pride in what they do. We're frontline, so it's important that we be professional and proud, because you only get one time to make a first impression. And we meet and greet, and we need to keep our eyes open for everything. So, I thank you all.
Thank you.
From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Well, thank you, Linda. Next up is an operator recognition from our contractor, Keolas, Ramikia Davis. Do we have Ramikia with us? Ms. Davis noticed a young child in trouble and helped him get home to his family. The young boy boarded the bus alone, had no money, and seemed confused. Upon speaking to him, Ms. Davis quickly realized he needed help to get home. She notified dispatch and stayed with the child until Metro arrived. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for taking quick action and ensuring the safety of a vulnerable child.
Thanks. First, I want to thank my job, Keolas, and also the Safety Department, Cecil. He do an awesome job, and he, you know, always tell us, if you see something, say something. Safety is always first. And when I saw that little boy at the bus stop, and he have no fear, my first thing that came to mind is like, what if this was my nephew, or my niece, or somebody child that really needed help? And the first thing I did, I brought him on the bus. I told him, hey, get on the bus, sit right here so I can see you. And I secured my bus and called BOC, and they told me what to do. And I just want to thanks my job, Keolas. I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we hear so many stories about some of the tough things that occur out in the field. It's so fun to hear these stories of heroes who are out there in the front lines and doing some really great things for the community. So, thank you. The next item in the CEO report is going to be provided by David Clyde, our Associate General Counsel, our legislative update.
Good morning, members of the board. During the 2019 legislative session, the RTC only had one direct piece of legislation, which was Senate Bill 426. This bill authorizes the, so it extends the ballot question deadline that was previously for December 31, 2020, and extends it to December 31, 2024, giving the RTC additional flexibility in deciding whether to seek a transportation-related ballot question. There were also a few other transportation-related bills that were heard this session, two of them related to electric vehicles. SCR III directs the Legislative Committee on Energy to conduct a study on the electrification of vehicles, and also looks at studying alternative forms of revenue for infrastructure beyond fuel tax revenue. It also looks at the costs connected to transportation-related pollution. That will be done in the interim before the next legislative session. There was also Assembly Bill 483, which we call the, which was called the VMT Feasibility Pilot Program. This bill simply authorizes the DMV to begin collecting mileage as a part of registration, to determine the overall feasibility of potentially implementing a vehicle miles traveled fee if the legislature decides to do that in the future. Also passed this session was Assembly Bill 45, which permits electric scooters to be operated in the state, and then authorizes local jurisdictions to place certain time, place, and manner restrictions as part of public safety as they regulate those electric scooters. Finally, we have Assembly Bill 86. This bill makes updates to the Local Purchasing Statute, so NRS 332, and increases the advertising threshold for contracts, providing additional flexibility for the RTC. That will lead to additional flexibility for pilot projects and other technology contracts. That's it. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you. Lastly, for our this month's CEO report, we are bidding Fawn Fairwells to two of our board members who have been major supporters of the RTC and advisors and mentors. So, we'll go on with it. Mayor Pro Tem Lois Tarkanian was first elected to City Council in 2005 and joined the RTC Board in 2011. She's been a champion, not only for her constituents, but for all of Southern Nevada. She asks the tough questions, encouraging us to find better ways to serve our community. Mayor Pro Tem Tarkanian has guided us on many major projects and initiatives, like fuel revenue indexing and our extension, and its extension, I-11, Flamingo Corridor improvements, as well as numerous transit safety improvements, planning studies, especially throughout the Las Vegas Medical District. And I've really enjoyed spending time with you, Councilwoman, both personally and professionally. You have such a great story. You have so much historical insight and knowledge on Southern Nevada. So, those times that we got to kind of get off track sometimes and talk about other things are moments that I'll always remember, because your insights into how our city developed are beyond most, most, most people, certainly me. I also appreciate the fact that all of my calls and conversations inevitably had to do with really taking care of constituents at a ground level. You were less interested in some of those higher policy levels, but really interested in knowing, how do I take care of my constituents who are dealing with bus stop issues or transit issues? And you had a great passion for education, for schools and children. So, thank you. You left a mark on our agencies and on our agency, and I hope you're proud of what you've done. So, thank you. We had some pictures. We got pictures. Oh, oh, look, and to add to your collection of Lucite awards.
Oh, how nice. Thank you very, very much. You know, I said earlier during the flood control meeting that this committee was a committee that I wanted to stay on. There was no acidity between members. We all had a good time together. We might not agree, but we certainly respected each other and came together on important issues. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the fact that even at my age, there was so much, so much that I could learn from all of you. I appreciate the fact also that you have such a congeniality amongst your workers, your staff. I guess I can say there's no backbiting, no, you know, whispering, which you sometimes find in bureaucracies. You're just wonderful. And I couldn't have worked with a greater group. And I just want to tell you how very honored I felt, how I always told the mayor, this was the committee I wanted to stay on. And I appreciate having, in fact, I feel honored to have been on the committee this long. So, thank you so much, and thank you for this also.
Thank you. And our other goodbye. Mayor Rod Woodbury was elected to the Boulder City Council in 2011 and joined the RTC Board in 2015. In that time, he's been an advocate for traffic safety. He's been budget-conscious and fiscally responsible, and has been willing to look at the issues from all angles. He provided leadership and support to our agency as we built I-11, which at times I know was challenging in working with constituents. He passed the extension of fuel revenue indexing and launched other major initiatives like Bike Share Onboard and our Golden Knights Express. Through it all, he displayed a collaborative spirit, always emphasizing the need to work together with our community. And I want to take a moment to say thank you, too. You recognize your role in Boulder City is Boulder City, but when we talked with you, you, and briefed you on issues, you always recognized the importance of the regional aspects of this board, that it wasn't just about Boulder City or about, and you were always looking out for Boulder City. The questions that you asked always pertained to the larger vision related to the overall, making the right decision for the overall region. And I feel that actually about all of our board members, that there's always, you recognize the weightiness and the severity of your role in being beyond just your jurisdictions. And that makes for a very healthy board in making some of these decisions. So, I appreciate your leadership in that area. And thanks, we enjoyed working with you. Oh, yeah, and you get more Lucite, too.
If I could, I'd like to say a few words. And I don't want to talk about me, but I want to talk about my good friend, Councilwoman Tarkanian first. You know, you said a lot of good things about her, but I got to know her, especially on the Health District Board, and really just admire her service. In addition to being a councilwoman for, I don't know what it's been, it's over a dozen years now. Obviously, she was on the school board for a dozen years before that, and just really has dedicated her life to education, as have other members on this board as well. But, you know, speech pathology, autistic children, and just on and on, the awards go on. Let's not forget that she was a second mother to lots of young men back in Jerry's days, and just a lifetime of service to our community. And when you are a servant like that, you have, and a big name in a city, you get, you have a big target on your back, and you get lots of negatives that come with the positives. And there's no family that's dedicated more to Southern Nevada in the last 40 years than the Tarkanian family. And she's just a model servant. And I wish, I wish my tenure could have been anywhere near what hers was, because she's just done it forever. And I get the feeling that she's not done yet. She's probably going to find another way to serve. And then I just want to thank the RTC as well. What a model agency you guys are, from top to bottom. Efficiency has already been mentioned, employee morale, and you've certainly helped Boulder City in so many ways. The I-11 project was a mammoth project, the first step in what's really going to be a game changer for all of Southern Nevada. But in addition to that, there's been other projects. We have a Complete Streets project that you've really helped us out with that's going forward. It's going to change Boulder City in a lot of positive ways. We just had the other day a meeting on our trail system improvements to increase our connectivity out there at the River Mountain Loop Trail. And so, at every step of the way, you've always come forward with funding, with positive ideas and energy. And I wish I could have contributed more to the board. I feel like I've learned so much from this group. And whenever somebody asks about a model agency to, you know, to emulate, it's going to be the RTC, especially an agency of the size that you are. To have that from top to bottom with so many employees is just an amazing thing. So, thank you for allowing me to serve with you.
That concludes your general manager's report. Next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report from Director Swallow.
Thank you. It's good to be down here where it's warm. And I know I said that last month, but it seems like it's not warming up up there. So, it's good to be down here. All right. So, I'm going to start with another update on Project Neon. We had our first full I-15 southbound lane closure last weekend from 95 to Sahara. So, the Spaghetti Bowl to Sahara, we had the southbound full closure last weekend, starting tomorrow night at 10:00 PM. We're going at it again northbound from Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl. We'll open again at 5:00 AM on Monday morning. And, you know, since I announced that we were going to do this last month, and since we actually did it last week, we've been getting a lot of questions as to why do we have to do a full closure? And so, I just wanted to address that. And it's really about having the least impact to traffic possible. We are trying to do this in the overnight hours, so it limits already our ability and our construction time to do it. If we put out the cones and pull back the cones, we end up having even shorter timeframes in which to do the paving. So, it ends up that it would endure closures. They might be smaller closures, but for weeks. And so, in order to do, get it done and have the least impact, we're trying to do it in the Pava Palooza, as we're calling it, and just rip the Band-Aid off and get it done. So, the other reason why we're doing it is the safety of our workers. A few years ago, we had a partial lane closure at Tropicana, along I-15 near Tropicana, and when we were resurfacing. And we started with partial lane closures. And what we found is Metro was issuing, they issued over 200 tickets in just the first couple of days. RTC's cameras actually track people going at 70 miles an hour or more along that corridor. So, it's just not safe for our employees and the contracting community that's out there doing the work. I will contrast that with, because you're going to ask probably, well, then why are you doing partial closures south of Sahara? And the reason why we're able to do it south of Sahara for the express, the new converted through lane and the HOV lane is we're only doing the two inside lanes, so we're not having contractors in the middle of moving traffic. They're on the outside edge. So, almost done, full lane closure northbound Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl this weekend. And there'll be some lingering paving through next week. And barring any unforeseen circumstances, we should be out of it, out of I-15 at that point. Granted, it is construction, and there is weather, and you never know what could happen. But that's the goal, is next week. After that, we'll be looking at final touches and really finishing the project out. So, just an update on paving and the Pava Palooza. All right. Road swap on May 15th, the Las Vegas City Council approved a road swap with NDOT. The exchange is scheduled to be final in July. And just like we've done with the county in the past, and we've done this with the city previously, this is something that makes sense. Give control of the roads to the folks that have the most interest in the road, and they're best equipped to manage those roads. And so, this particular swap was sections of Sahara, Charleston, and Fremont in exchange for Summerlin Parkway. Previously, we exchanged with the county other portions of Sahara and Charleston, so now both of those roads are under local control, and we will start managing Summerlin Parkway. And associated with that, I'm looking forward to working with Mayor March and her team on discussions with Boulder Highway in the future. So... All right, Kyle Canyon Interchange. It's going to be a party season for NDOT and our community, our local communities here in the next couple of months. Next week, on June 20th, we will be celebrating, it says the near completion, because the road is not actually going to open until June 24th. But on June 20th, we'll be doing the ribbon cutting for the Kyle Canyon Interchange. And we're going to have a big barbecue. So, starting at 11:00 AM, we'll be the ribbon cutting, we'll have a barbecue. And really, the reason why we're celebrating this is because as our valley has grown, that particular, it's now an interchange. It's not just a left turn. I remember when I first moved to the valley, it seemed like once you passed Cheyenne, it was hours until you got to Kyle Canyon. And now I get lost, and I pass it, because we've grown so far. And so, this is actually going to make the, make the safety for the traveling public so much better. So, now that they, they don't have to cross live traffic when they, when they make their movement to go up and enjoy the cooler, cooler climbs of Mount Charleston. So, I'm So I'm excited about this opening, next Thursday, 11:00 AM. And like I said, it's party season, and this one's today. So I am excited to announce that later today, Tina and I will be working together to do the ribbon cutting on our Small Business Resource Center. This project has been in the works for over five years, and I can tell you, when I was a small business owner, I wished that it had existed. So I am glad to see that we have partnered together with our contracting community, federal highways, the RTC, and so many others, to open this resource center that will provide co-working space for the business owners, where they will also have access to advisors and workshops, and give them the opportunity to connect with the community and with business partners. With Project NEON, we aim to have DBEs participate at the relative amount of $20 million in contracts, and we were able to surpass that by $10 million for a total of 30, so by 50% we surpassed it. And I'm hoping that with the Small Business Resource, we will be able to continue to develop the opportunities for our small and disadvantaged business community. So I'm excited about that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your next item is your consent agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 56, and may be taken in one motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
That brings us to our non-consent agenda item, which is item number 57. We, as part of the passage of fuel revenue indexing, we promised that we would come back on an annual basis to report to you the status of the program. And so, John Penwales, our Senior Director of Streets and Highways, will open this agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Tina. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. Appreciate the opportunity to brief you on this. For the report today, I'm going to be talking about the project side of the fuel revenue indexing. With the initial FRI projects winding down and the FRI extension projects ramping up, we'd like to share how we're moving from one phase to the other. And then I'll turn it over to our CFO, Mark Trazdall, who will show you the money. So first, we're going to talk about the dollars, the projects, jobs, the local small business status. So, since the FRI funding began in 2013, the value of our inter-local contracts with the member agencies is $635 million in the initial phase, and $216 million in the extension projects. To date, more than $850 million in FRI funding has been encumbered by the member agencies. That funding translates into hundreds of projects over the last six and a half years. These are calendar years, just to be clear. This chart obviously is a little busy, but you can see on the left that in 2013, we began with just a handful of design and construction projects, and a lot of that work had yet to be started. And now in 2019, we have completed nearly 200 projects, and expect all 225 to be delivered by the end of this year. They are on schedule for that. What we want to show here is really, what we're trying to show graphically is the foundation that those 225 projects set, and then the FRI extension projects building off of that over the next 10, 15, 20 years. So the FRI extension projects will continue to grow off this chart. So in addition to the more than 70 extension projects in progress, that brings the total now to 297 projects that have been funded with FRI dollars. Jobs continue to grow with the addition of FRI extension projects that began in 2017 as well. We have just about topped out at 8,200 jobs on the initial list, and have added just over 1,800 jobs with the FRI extension, bringing the total to just over 10,000 jobs funded from FRI. And that's a big number. And 78 local small businesses, or LSBs, were put to work on the initial FRI projects, and we're happy to say that 16 of those LSBs have already received work on the design or construction side. So as far as the construction update goes, as I said, we are expecting by the end of this year, all of the 225 projects to have been delivered, that are improving and maintaining our community's very valuable roadway system. So Mr. Chairman, we'll remember this, helped us with the groundbreaking back on a very hot day in July last year. This is the Lone Mountain Project, which was our first major construction project to break ground, and it is expected to be completed next month. This project runs from 215 to Tenaya, and includes roadway, sidewalk, median upgrades, as well as improved street lighting and a new traffic signal at Fort Apache. The City of Las Vegas' Coolidge Avenue Project continues to work the city has been doing downtown with improving pavement, upgrading street lighting, widening sidewalks, and adding green bike lanes, and landscaping, lots of landscaping, which is great. The project runs between Main Street and Fourth Street, and is expected to be completed in August. And in the City of Henderson, we have Water Street, and that is receiving utility and roadway upgrades with new water line, fire hydrants, sewer lines, paving, striping, curbs, and sidewalk. This project is expected to be completed end of July, early August. And then finally, in the City of North Las Vegas, they have their Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project throughout the city that has received important repair and replacement of aging asphalt to preserve the quality of their neighborhoods, and we are happy to report that this project has been completed. So with that, I will hand it over to CFO, Mark Trazdall.
Thank you, John. We'll start out by looking at the PPI, or Producer Price Index, which determines the level of revenue and what taxes, what tax rates will be charged. We look at this graph here, and you can see the not-so-nice-even-green line there, that was kind of high in 2012 and 13, and has decreased here in 18. The good news in 18 is that we have an increase of 7.1% in the PPI. The bad news is that 13.8% rolled off from fiscal '08. So that still caused that to go down, the 10-year rolling average. And looking at our rate, the FRI that was initially passed in 2013, you can see that that has maxed out at the 10 cents that it was supposed to, and we had a real healthy and rapid increase in that tax rate. And we go to the extension of FRI, and you can see those rates are a lot lower. That's due to the 10-year rolling average of the PPI decreasing from 2012 and 13 down to 17, 18, and 19. You can see we're at 3.4 cents, that tax rate, that was about the first year of FRI I. We started out with 3.2 cents. Then looking at the revenue that these taxes generate, you can see that the FRI I in fiscal 19, we're projecting that we'll be at about $91 million of revenue in 19, and projecting the same revenue, 91 million for fiscal '20. And the extension of FRI, you can see, we're expecting about 13 million in 19. And with this increase this year, that's effective July 1 of 19, we're projecting next year we'll bring in about $18 million of revenue for the extension of FRI. And those are my prepared remarks. Would be glad to answer any questions.
Comments or questions? Mayor Goodman?
How are we figuring in, I mean, is this the result of the growing use of gasoline? Where are we figuring the battery-operated effect on FRI?
That has not been that significant yet. The number of electric vehicles in the whole complement of vehicles in Clark County, I think we're still under 2%. So the growth of the valley has really offset that.
And so as you look to the future, what does transportation see based on everything we're getting through the news and the media?
That's a very good question.
So how do you project that and plan for that?
We project very conservatively.
But I, so, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mayor, I will let you know that at a national level, it's a very big conversation. Congress recognizes that motor vehicle fuel tax is not a sustainable revenue source. But at the same time, they're very challenged in trying to find, to agree on an alternative. Locally, within this state, and we'll be working closely with NDOT as well, in trying to project specifically for our state, what is going to be the growth of the electric vehicle fleet, and how do we prepare for it moving forward? Now, the extension, the ballot question we had related to fuel revenue indexing, gave us a 10-year period, so it expires in the year 2026. And the hope, the hope is not a business plan, but the intent is, that was a Band-Aid, that gets us through a period of time. And then these next coming years, working with NDOT and the legislature, we are going to have to figure out, what is a sustainable revenue source for roadway infrastructure moving forward? Because we agree, it is not motor vehicle fuel tax.
Thank you. Thank you.
On that subject, you mentioned that there's two interim studies that are looking at this?
There is one interim study, and then there is a pilot program to look at VMTs, to collect mileage for, to further look at VMTs.
And who's, on the VMT, who's driving that pilot program?
That's the Department of Motor Vehicles, who's responsible to begin collecting mileage to look at the feasibility of it. And then the other, the study is being done by the Committee on Energy for the Legislature during the interim.
I just have to throw in my pitch, as we have conversations about VMT at a state level, collecting odometer levels at a state level is very, odometer readings at a state level, it is very important that we figure out how that money comes back to the counties or the regions of origin. Calculating just based on odometer at a state level is great for the state, for sustaining the state buckets. But fuel revenue indexing is a local conversation, and we want to make sure that those miles driven within our county are captured within our county. So it gets very complicated. It's not just a very, an annual reading of the number of miles that you drove in the state, because we have to figure out how many of those miles were actually within the county of origin.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just continue the conversation. We're one of four states in the country, I believe, that has a legislature that meets every other year rather than every year. So this is, in this body, I think there's an urgency to address this now, so we are prepared to go forward full force to take care of this funding. If we wait for every other year for the legislature to convene. And there are only four states that are at that level rather than meeting annually. It is a critical issue to be able to find these funds.
Agreed. And not to complicate matters, but I do want to leave a seed of thought with you as well. And that is that a lot of our revenue from fuel revenue indexing and our motor vehicle fuel tax comes from out-of-state drivers, and currently they're buying gas in our state, so they're contributing to, they're paying for the use of their roads. If we start to eliminate, we're going to have to figure out how we also capture those miles, because if you use the roads, you have to pay for the roads. So it is going to be a very challenging conversation within our county, within our state, but also at a national level.
Ms. CEO?
If you allow me, also, I'd be really interested to see the details on different calculations, because I think going forward, we can't just look at it as simply as miles traveled. Although I feel kind of guilty about it, I did recently purchase a full-size pickup truck. And the use of that pickup truck, especially if it's loaded, is different than the use of a little subcompact Nissan that I rented not that long to drive around. So I'm hoping that there'll be a way to also to calculate the fuel efficiency of the vehicles that are projected, as also with the weight of the vehicle, to be part of that calculation. I'm sure we have smart guys, you know, engineers and mathematicians who can figure that out. So I hope it's not just miles traveled.
I know that is part of the industry's conversation and at a congressional level as well. But yes, you're right.
And if we charge a little bit more for a little bit larger vehicles, well quite frankly, that might actually get people into smaller and smaller vehicles that are a lot easier on the environment anyhow.
Noted. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, your next item is item number 58, which is closed-door meeting with legal counsel. We do not need that item this month. So which brings us to our final item, which is item 59, your final citizens' participation period.
It's the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board? Ms. Anderson?
Well, good morning, everyone. I guess Patricia Anderson. I've been coming to the meetings, and we have a lot of things that I wanted you to address. We have a lot of people that, I mean, they're homeless, I mean, all right, we all could be homeless, which is understandable, but these carts, they're all in front of the, they are actually in front of all of the different places, and we have a lot of abandoned buildings. And they, I feel that they, you know, it's not right. I mean, they, and they come, get on the bus, and I mean, get on the bus, and they, with, I don't have any money, and they come with expired bus passes, and they're disrespectful to the bus drivers. And there's some great bus drivers you have, you know, and a lot of them are, I encourage them, I say, well, you're going to have a great day, whatever, and, you know, and they just not, it's just, I don't know, like I said, I feel that we need to do something about this. And another thing, what I feel that you should do, I shouldn't, I feel that you shouldn't have, you shouldn't contract the bus drivers. I feel personally, because they should really work for RTC. I mean, I, you know, they're out there, their life is on the line, and another bus, a lot of lines which you should respect is, well, Lake Mead. Lake Mead, a bus driver said that, you know, she was spit upon. You know, it's not right. I mean, and they try to be free, and they try to ride free. Past Decatur, she said it's nothing but trouble. But like I said, I get off Decatur and I go home, whatever, or do what I have to do. But I feel that we need to work with the drivers, you know, work with them, and it's not fair to them. And a lot of them, they have, they do, they ride free, which they shouldn't be. So I'm just concerned about that. Right on Decatur, across from Ricardo's, there's abandoned building there. And that building, it's garbage and everything. I've called safety about it and everything, and they need to clean it up, it's really pretty bad. And as they say, I don't say anything, I'm very good, I get on the bus, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, cause any trouble, but I see a lot of things, and a lot of drivers are, they are, you know, they frustrated, and I try to tell them that, you know, they're trying to do, they're doing their job. And I feel they need a little bit more time between layovers. I feel they need 30 minutes, or 35 minutes, you know, because, I mean, they're driving, and, you know, and they go into a lot with the drivers. So God bless you, and thank you so very much. And I'm there for them. God bless you. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, close this portion to public comment. Thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Brown, could I, well, you're already adjourned. I just wanted to say something if I could.
We're unadjourned. We're back on.
After our vote on the transit, light rail transit last time, there's been a lot of comments in the paper editorials, letters to the editor, and so forth about our vote, and asking how in the world could we have voted the way we did. I just wanted to mention that it wasn't just the heavy cost, far more for putting light rail in, it was also the annual cost that affected how I voted. It was double. Every year it would have been double for light rail than for the other. And secondly, information had come to me about the problem with light rail that they're having now in Los Angeles, which is perhaps the most alarming. And that is, in the three quarters of, first three quarters of 2018, their heavy rail subway lost 4.45% of its riders, but the light rail system lost 5.21% in a region, the Los Angeles area, that has perhaps taken more of its future on that type of transit than any other growing metro. I just wanted to put this out to the public, because sometimes individuals don't understand I just wanted to put this out to the public, because sometimes individuals don't understand all of what's involved in making a decision. I think we made the right decision, and I know a lot of people believe in a light rail, but I just wanted to explain, and I'm sure that the other members of this board also had reasons too for that. I just wanted to go on the record on my last meeting here, saying that. Clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.